I gotta open the meeting, alright. Are you ready, Monty Penny?
You are.
Called the meeting to order. We got our items from the public, no public. Approval of the agenda.
I move to accept the agenda for February 25th, 2020.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Board of Equalization Review, Larry Hess Assessor.
Okay.
Session number eight, deliberation in decisions.
Good morning. Well, I think everything is done. We got a couple of changes. As Norwood mentioned that we could present them this morning, just as a last minute thing. I think we have. I've got these numbers for Quad Graphics and also for Sunny Spurgeon that you wanted. So I have this here. And we have, I think John has one they need to make a change on. And I think Dave's got one that we want to change on. I think that should wrap it up. So if you want, I can give you these numbers for Quad and Sunny Spurgeon here. I just got copies of what I had over here. I didn't bring copies for everybody.
Just give Penny a copy before you.
Okay. You want me to name them all, what they are now? Okay, for Quad, we had, we, not we, the state. The state had for Quad, they had forty-nine million, eight-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, five-hundred dollars. That's for the one that's out by GM. It's a map and parcel number is Opeken two, parcel twenty-six. Now, she changed the county modifier. And of course, she recommended that they didn't raise it this year. They'd stayed, they would stay where they were at 2020 until next year. And then they put the county modifier on because they didn't know about it. So that number is correct for 2020. Forty-nine million, eight-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, five-hundred dollars. Now, the other one down there by, in the Arden District behind VA Center there, that's an Arden District map twelve, parcel seventy-four point two. And the same thing there, they changed the modifier, but we didn't go with that. The value for that parcel is eleven million, three-hundred-and-thirteen thousand, one-hundred dollars for 2020. And I'll give just the penny, you can have that. As far as Sunny Spurgeon, the, the value that we have on Opeken District map six, parcel seventy-six point one for 2020 is two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, seven-hundred dollars. That's two-hundred-and-ten thousand, seven-hundred dollars for the land. And we had that five-thousand-dollar value for the billboard. Okay? And the names, addresses, parcel numbers, and the values are here. And we have, I have nineteen values. What it went up to when the tables changed and what it went back to when you all were pregnant. So I'll give these to Penny on those two. That's all I have, other than the ones we have to make a change on.
Alright, the one that I have to make the change on was Opeken District map ten P, parcel twenty-eight. And it was owned by Amanda Lewis. And she came in and said it had mold issues. I told her we would make an adjustment if she had got something into us by Thursday.
What's on, what's on the property?
It's a house.
There was a flood out there. It was up there by the, or Hartland is there.
Correct. So she had someone come in and did the mold. So we made an adjustment on it. The old assessment was sixty-eight thousand, three-hundred-and-forty. And with the adjustment we made for the mold, because it's unlivable at this time, is forty-four thousand, seven-hundred.
She's gonna bring it back to residents for living quality or gonna tear it down or what?
She's not sure exactly what she's gonna do, but I told her every year right now, as long as it's there, we're gonna come out and see that it's still mold or if she's fixed it, we will take it.
Yeah, if it's vacant.
Yes. Alright.
Doesn't go that high, does it?
Yeah. It's the story of my life. This is a vacant piece of ground in Inwood. It sits at seventeen point nine acres and it's situated between the new fire hall and the church, the Assembly of God Church there. For its shape and size, lack of road frontage and the shape of it, after consultation with the owner, the current assessment on it is seven-hundred-and-forty-one thousand, sixty dollars. The proposed assessment would be five-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, three-hundred-and-forty dollars.
And who's, who's the owner?
Oh, Mr. Wee, I would have to, I didn't bring it to your side.
You have the parcel number?
O-seven, six, sixteen.
How much road frontage does it have?
There is a, it mostly, the train tracks there. It runs all the way along train tracks and comes up. And in between where the fire hall is and the church has a piece of land. And it has a small piece that comes up too, which is, so most of the property is back behind.
I mean, is it fifty feet or a hundred feet or?
I didn't quite measure. It is probably in the neighborhood of about sixty feet where the most of.
Big enough for a right-of-way, but?
Yes, he has access. And the access, he actually has a little bit of access on Sager Drive, if you know what I'm talking, has to come in. Back behind where the fire hall is, he has a little bit, if they would allow him access that way, he has access. He's not shut in. But he has tried to sell this property for, it's been on the market for over eight months. And with the price that he's trying to give, he has had nothing. And you speaking about it, just thought that maybe because of the situation that he's in there with the shape and size of it, that it was due a reduction from his previous.
Probably be good for storage locker.
So.
Is he trying to sell it for more or less than what your valuation is?
Right now, his price on it is seven-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand. And, and our appraisal, if, if you accept, would be eight-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, nine-hundred. That would be the appraised amount.
The five-eighteen is the, is the assessment?
Correction.
I, I do need to know who it is.
Yeah, I'll be right back.
Can't really hold on to something if I don't know that somebody that I do business with. We, we need to know. It's kind of important to somebody that's.
I said, if you're somebody you do business with, you'd have to excuse yourself, then we don't have.
It just doesn't get changed.
This is just what happens.
That's what happens. What happens when you wait till the.
And the numbers you gave Larry for Quad and Spurgeon, those were assessments or?
Maybe it was appraisal.
Appraisals, yeah.
So that's the same thing we had, right? That's not, that, that hasn't changed. That's the same thing we had on the sheets that we have had discussions about. Had the clarification from Cameron last week.
And Amanda, the forty-four seven is the assessment?
And that name, sir, is Inwood Investment Group LLC. Who that is?
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Is that all we have?
The only changes, so you all want to talk about approval changes?
This is the last two, right?
Just.
Just the last two, Amanda Lewis and Inwood Investment Group?
No, no.
All four.
All four of them, yeah. Oh, that's right, we didn't accept the other one.
Yeah, those are the ones that we had discussions and wanted to. You familiar with all that?
Yeah, I'm familiar with that. I just, I was just trying to make sure, we gotta vote individually?
No, you. We're gonna vote all together and I'll entertain the motion whenever you're ready.
That's what I was trying to put together. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the appraisals for Quad of the GM area property at forty-nine thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-six, excuse me, forty-nine, huh?
Forty-nine million.
Forty-nine million, eight-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, five-hundred at the GM location, Opeken two, twenty-six. The appraised value in the Big Shockey area of eleven million, three-hundred-and-thirteen thousand, one-hundred in the Arden area of map twelve, seven-four, seventy-four point two. And also Spurgeon's property, Opeken six, seventy-six point one, total two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, seven-hundred.
Two-ten, isn't it?
Well, that's just the land.
Seven-hundred, that is the assessed value. That's the appraised value, okay. Some of these were assessed values and appraised values. I'm just trying to make sure I had it right. That's the appraised value.
So two-ten and five, so, okay.
And then on the, for the assessed value, the property owned by Amanda Lewis, Opeken ten, point one, lot twenty, from forty-four thousand, seven-hundred, we accept that assessed value. And then the Inwood Investment Group, seventeen point nine acres. And the assessed value is five-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, three-hundred and three dollars.
Let's go back to Amanda Lewis. Penny, do you have that in front of you? Check the parcel number. I didn't get it that way. I didn't get the one.
I thought it was ten point one, maybe I made a mistake.
I think it's ten D, twenty-eight.
D oh eight, that's ten G.
N G.
Ten G.
Have a motion?
You have a motion, yeah.
Well, I guess I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. What's that?
Clarify for me. The Quads, are they assessed or?
They're appraised. They're appraised.
Quads are appraised, certain things.
Yes.
Lewis is assessed.
Right.
Give me a vote now?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye. Alright. Thank you, we made it through that.
Now, in front of you are two orders, one for Graystring, Greystone Springs, Spring Mills, and the other for the trustees at the Centerpoint Bible Church. The easier one is the church, let's do that one first.
Say again? Church. Church, okay.
The church. They, they were in here on the first day, first session, January thirtieth. This is a three-point-three-three acre parcel located at Spring Mills. Appraised at by the assessor at a million, nine-thirty-five, four-hundred with an assessment of one million, one-sixty-one, two-forty. It's a twelve thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty square foot building on the property. And the property, the land and the building sold to the church for a million, one-seventy-five thousand. Building was constructed in nineteen ninety-three.
Money churches.
The taxpayer presented an appraisal for William G. Bowen, Inc., Figurstown. The appraisal lists the fair market value of the property at one million, four-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand. The building was built according to the appraisal for office use, is easily adaptable, alternative to commercial uses, and notes the building's functional. Size and finish of buildings within general granite parameters for modern office buildings for similar commercial uses. Very little physical depreciation. Appraiser state that there is sales activity in the general area and a large concentration of consumers in the Spring Mills BUD. They find that if the land was vacant, the highest and best use of the site is a future commercial development or destination-oriented type set of use such as an office. Most likely purchased or recycled being an office destination-oriented user. Improved, as improved land. Appraisal concludes that the subject's planned church use is sufficient use of the site and is in line with the highest and best use. However, they point out, it is important to note the subject's planned use as a church under utilizes the property in terms of intensive use. Given this, the most likely buyer of subject property be a destination-oriented commercial user, small business or an office or a real estate investor. Appraisal considered the sales approach to value, the income approach to value, but did not develop a cost approach. Sales approach was determined to be the most appropriate manner of valuation. At page thirty-nine of the appraisal, the stabilized value was noted as a million, six-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. This gross amount was decreased by a hundred thousand, which the taxpayer told the appraiser was his estimate as the cost for renovating in order to open the church. Balance of a million, five-seventy, a million, five-hundred-and-seventy thousand was then decreased by eighty thousand, eighty-five thousand for profit, yielding the fair market value appraisal of a million, four-eighty-five. At page forty-nine, appraisal notes, quote, "A representative of ownership, previous ownership acknowledged the contract prices in favor of the buyer, but wanted to get the asset off the books. In any event, as indicated in the preceding highest and best use section, subject planned use as a church under utilizing property," end quote. Thus, the board finds that the sale of the property to the taxpayer was not an arms-length market-driven sale. The assessor's office offered testimony of John Street, commercial appraiser. Mr. Street testified that he considered the sales, income and cost approaches to value the property, but utilized the cost approach because the sales approach indicated that there were no sales of comparable nature during the pertinent time period. And regardless, and with regard to the income approach, there was not sufficient data from which to develop capitalization rate or something. In performing the cost approach, Mr. Street indicated that he considered reforms of depreciation, physical deterioration, functional and economic obsolescence. Normal adjustment was made for physical depreciation, but there was no evidence of functional obsolescence. Mr. Street further testified that the purchase of the property by the trustees was October twenty-second, twenty nineteen. It was thus outside the time parameters, the July one, twenty nineteen assessment. He indicated the three comparable properties shown in the addition plus two additional apartments recently sold show the average selling price per square foot to be a hundred and forty-four dollars and four cents. Now multiplying the square footage by the average selling price of the taxpayer's comparable properties, appraisal would amount to a million, eight fifty-two, five forty-four. Square foot selling price of the subject property of ninety-one dollars, thirty-seven cents is well under what the average square foot selling price of the taxpayer's comparable properties are. This suggests that the subject property's selling price is undervalued compared to the market. Initially, you pointed out that the taxpayer's valuation of the land, three-hundred thousand dollars, amounts to a more than five-hundred percent downward adjustment on the land value when compared to sales in close proximity to the subject land. The board is not persuaded that the assessor's assessment is erroneous. True value of the land to the market cannot be revised to meet the use put to the property and the price paid for the property by the owner. Curb is on the taxpayer's approved by clear convincing catalysts. Assessment is in error, the taxpayer failed to meet this burden. Accordingly, the taxpayer petition is denied and the assessor's assessment, tax year twenty-twenty, is a part of it. Anybody?
Any discussion?
About? Does the thirty days start?
Starts upon receipt of this order.
The, the day they get to.
Right. Three days after we make it.
I don't have any discussion. I think it's pretty clear that they failed to prove the.
And they got a right to appeal, so, yeah.
We need a.
Motion?
Motion to approve this recommendation.
Mr. President, Mr. President, I contend, I move that we accept the order of county council regarding the trustees of Centerpoint Bible Church, parcel O-two fourteen, one point seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Bentley.
The next one is Greystone Springs Mills, Springs Mills, L.C. Previously assessed in the name of government, Spring Properties Income Trust, LLC. The parcel ID is zero-two fourteen, dash, one point, one zero. The appeal was heard on February twentieth. The assessment of the land, four-point-four-two acre parcel, five-hundred-and-twenty. The appraisal before allocating it to primary, secondary and residual acreage amounts to a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, four-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and twenty-nine cents per acre. Taxpayer argues that the market value of the unimproved land is more appropriately sixty thousand dollars per acre. To be noted that until appearance hearing, Greystone was apparently appealing both land and improvements, and its petition is consistent with an appeal in the total assessment. However, the taxpayer's representative clarified that its intention was to object only to the appraised or fair market value of the. the appraised or fair market value of the land. In support of its contention, the taxpayer presented six allegedly comparable properties for comparison, all on the east side of I-81, only two of which are unimproved properties, respectively, comparables one and, it says two, it should be three, one and three. Uh, all six properties are located in the same general geographic area, however, one of the properties comparable sets is a pending transaction and is therefore not considered by the board. The allegedly comparable properties, because of their location on the east side of the interstate highway, are afforded the benefits of traffic from both Route eleven and I-81. The taxpayer's subject properties located on the west side of I-81, away from the heaviest traffic, is a real estate property. Assessor argued that the land studies performed by his office indicate the need for two different neighborhoods, and that sales in those neighborhoods justify the different appraisal values. Assessor additionally noted that some of the comparables are located in an industrial park, which typically yield lower values. Assessor testified that his office considered all three approaches, uh, to value the property, but chose the cost approach because the income approach, uh, lacked data for developing a cap rate, showed to the legislative rule that there were not sufficient comparable sales on which to base a sales approach to value of the market. Assessor's testimony presented by Tamara Edgar, the assessor's assistant, performed a commercial approach, also revealed that in performing the cost approach, uh, considered and addressed depreciation and informed physical depreciation, functional, and economic obsolescence, although such testimony proved not to be applicable on the decision of taxpayer to object only to the land values. While the taxpayer makes a compelling case, is not clearly and convincingly shown that the assessor's assessment is erroneous, or that his arbitrary development of his requested fair market value accurately reflects the true fair market value. Accordingly, the board denies the taxpayer's appeal, hereby affirms the assessor's assessment. Reviewable, inable. Is there discussion?
Yeah. There. Uh, this has come up several times, and, uh, about the neighborhood thing. What's it take to change neighborhoods, or create a new neighborhood, or whatever?
You need to look at sales and determine, uh, areas that would reflect similar value, and those areas would be considered a neighborhood. So, my opinion of T J Jackson Drive would be possibly a neighborhood by itself.
With the exemption, with the except, except, exception of the north, uh, end of that road.
Well, yeah.
Right, because the, the north end that is accessible to nine oh one should still be in that other neighborhood where you have those extreme higher values.
I agree. It should cut off probably where that first industrial building starts, when it goes down, uh, there. It's, it's just a separate strip. When they laid out, uh, you know, that development, um, what's his name, well, he set those value, he set those, those lots up for industrial, and it's kind of weird that you could do that in something, but it's a mix, you know, out. But I think that strip maybe should need to be looked at, possibly, and have its own neighborhood.
Right.
There's not that many sales there, so you have to determine, you have to look at some other sales, you have to come up with a value, you know, based, a fair value that you could apply to that. Because we have two sales, one that's with the church, and then we have the other one that Mr. Good bought, and they both were kind of odd sales. They were direct sales, they weren't exposed to the market, so we can look at those, but we have to determine kind of a, a, an average value in there to set something up. You'd have to, I would set that neighborhood up kind of by itself as that strip. It's different than Route eleven, it's different than out there on where, uh, you know, Walmart is and all that. It's, it's just a little separate strip there, and it's kind of different.
So, do you think there's an argument that could be made that, that right across the interstate in the, uh, industrial park, this is kind of a, a little in, uh, industrial area or business area that's adjoining a subdivision? Do you think the argument could be made that those are similar values across the other side of the interstate that are not on the, the improved property, not the vacant property that?
Were the hospital?
Uh?
On that side of eleven?
No, on the, between eleven and eighty-one.
I'm not sure.
The, the compare, the, the comps that...
Allen Henry, or where his office is?
Yeah, the comps that, the comps that, um, they brought were in the industrial park between Route eleven and eighty-one.
Were Allen's office here?
Right.
In that?
That's where he came up with the six comps, right? That's where the six comparables came, and, and a couple of them were vacant land, and, and, uh, uh, according to Norwood's, uh, document here, letter, whatever you, you want to call it, uh, order, the, uh, the not lot, uh, the sixth one, um, should not be considered, but that one was out on Route eleven, wasn't it? Wasn't the sixth one an improved piece of ground that was, um, that he was trying to sell and said the value of it was sixty thousand an acre, because that's what he was trying to sell?
The pending.
Right. But the other parcels, what, what, what are the, what are the values of the, uh, land sales of the other, maybe we should have John up here?
Yeah. I understand what you're saying, and that's probably a good comparison. Now, the only difference is, uh, T J Jackson is real close to the, you know, the, the hot strip up there, in other words. This isn't, this park here, the Allen Henry's, is on down Route eleven, it's kind of, you know, away from all the activity up there at nine oh one, which, you know, is a little different, not a whole lot, but be good comparable to look at those compared to T J Jackson Drive.
I don't, I don't have, I don't have those comparables. Do we have, does anybody have that document that we could look at? That was the, the one that they had? Do you have it, John? You know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
Right, right. Thank you.
Yeah, that would be, that would be something to look at, because it's, it's between eleven and eighty-one. Uh, it's similar, you're going down eighty-one, you're going past that, you're going past, you know, T J Jackson Drive. And there's probably more recent sales there than, like you say, there's not a whole lot activity there on T J Jackson Drive other than them two sales, and it's, they're kind of odd sales, you know? So you have to look at the next area closest to that you have available, and that's another good spot to look at. So, yeah, I think it could be considered.
So, so, so would it be, would it be out of line to ask them to see if they could put together a comparable lot price with, um, with those, uh, comps that are across the street? And, and come back, if they could come up with something, and come back to us in a couple minutes with a suggested comp for that? If that's what you want.
I don't know if we can do that in a couple minutes. I don't know that we can do that in a couple minutes. That, that's gonna take some research and some time to do it. I doubt we can do it in a couple minutes. It, it's just, we can look at the sales.
So you'd rather I come up with it in a couple minutes?
If, you all still have, you all still have...
So, so do you think you could do a better job in a couple minutes than I could?
Well...
So, what was, what was the land values of the improved property in that, uh, in that subdivision? And I'm sure you have the same information available, but if it's on his, uh, his sheet, it may make it easier.
Okay, these are his comps he had.
Thank you.
This was oh-two-fourteen, eleven point fourteen.
Right.
Assess land value.
Yeah, so that one, that one...
One thirty-eight, oh-six, Z.
So, three was a vacant piece, and it was at eighty-five thousand per acre, and two was an improved at eighty-five thousand?
One and three are vacant.
Oh, okay.
Correct, two has a building. It's a, it's that shopping strip, well, is it?
Right.
Oh, yes it is. It's, it's the Farm Investments down where the, uh, big strip is, down there by the Coke Building, that's, this is enough.
Right.
And that was, uh, oh-two-fourteen, eighteen point one, a land value of two hundred and seventy-four thousand nine hundred and twenty, a building value of nine hundred and fifteen thousand eight hundred and forty.
So why, can you tell me why there's a, a big difference between Farm Investments, eighty-three, three oh nine, and the, uh, rental, uh, rental props at forty-eight? Um, so, one's, um, one's over eighty-three thousand an acre, and the other one's at almost, uh, almost forty-nine thousand an acre. Can you tell me why there's a big difference between those two?
Okay, the first comp that I read you was four point seven eight acres.
Right.
Okay, this is...
But that's just vacant land, I'm not...
Correct, and that's five point five, uh, be, without having anything else in front of me, because based on sales of, in that industrial park, and comparative to land sales out on Winchester or Winchell Pike, in comparative, things on Winchell Pike were selling a little bit greater, now what they were selling back in that. Now, I, I, he was asking us one heart about neighborhood, and commercially, we don't have a great deal of neighborhoods. We control the values based on sales, based on its location, commercial, location, location, location. So as the sales come in, that dictate, dictates to us, try to find the cutoff. For instance, at Springs Mills, how far down, how far from, if you were standing at the, the corner of Springs Mills and nine oh one, how far to the south, and how far to the north? Do these sales generate values, and where's that cutoff? Well, at the time at T J Jackson Drive, those buildings back there were selling for three million dollars, three million dollars, I mean, they, they, with those G S A leases, they were selling those, they'd be right. So, that cutoff of T J Jackson, it seemed like they were generating the value. So your land values would take that location. Now that, that's happening, what needs to be looked at now is its location, is it the same location as what these other ones are? And it's got to be looked at. And we, we got sales now on those buildings, where before the sales were three and four million. Now these sales have come in, are they open market? You know, we can argue that, but at the same time, those leases are no longer there, and they're...
This was the, this one was a G S A lease, it said the property.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
And then...
Yeah, he's actually had three buildings on that strip that were...
The government left.
Yes, it, it, it was three, and, and one's still viable, and one's still being used. The one at church, of course, that went vacant. Well, actually, I say vacant, the lease became up, and the one to Mr. Goodbough, it had been vacant for, and that lease had expired, uh, probably two years prior to when he bought. That was also part of one of those real estate investment trusts. Seems like in a real estate investment trust, if you have a property in that trust that is not generating any income, it, it's just get rid of. That it's, that's not doing that trust any good, and, and a lot of times in those trusts that's written, if it's not producing the lease, got that, they have no choice, get rid of. That was a part of the reason that the previous center had involved. So, yeah, you have to look at these values, and, and we generate, we look at these values based on the sales, and based on their location, and the locations on Winchell Pike generally have showed a higher value than what was back in that industrial park. So therefore, that's where you, you, you tend to use those things, you cut off, you know, here to there, that's as far as it goes, and then other side of the road, it could be very, it could be different based on. What we generally saw was, anything closer to eighty-one was a higher price, but sometimes in these industrial parks, it's just different, different animal, for whatever its reasons are, it just seems to be. So, you treat them that way. We don't necessarily just lump them in by its location, if it's not bringing any forth any values, then you can stick a location on it, comparable to what those values are showing.
Well, if you, if you have piece property that you have in, and it has a, uh, a G S A, uh, a lease on it, and you lose that lease, the only way you're going, I mean, what, what other avenue do they have other than coming to the county and saying, this, this is, this, you know, we're, we're never going to be able to rent it on market value rent at, at this time unless the government decides to rent off us again and make any money. We're gonna lose money if we rent it out, so the, you know, that, that kind of forces them to sell it to, to get a, um...
There's an argument.
Argue that, or you just go bankrupt and lose the property.
Well, that, there you go, and the argu, the argument to be made is the fact that you had a valuable lease, the lease is no longer there, so therefore then, what's the property worth in the value? It, it's an argument to put forward. You still, as far as a taxi goes, you still have to say that it, it's there. It's, it's not, and, and there's a, whatever the market is for vacant, uh, office buildings, that's what you got to kind of go. So, you can't, I know part of their argument is it's not worth anything, well, it's still got value, there's still a value in those buildings.
Well, absolutely, there's a value to it, but the value's not what it was.
It's not what it was.
And, and the problem is, the problem is, if, if we don't make some type of modification, then, then we're doing a disservice to the community because it's gonna sit vacant, because they can't rent it and make a profit. So they're gonna have to ask such a high level for profit in order to make any money, or, or for rent.
And we have other areas that, that are experiencing the same thing, not just at that location, the Darsen, another area I'm thinking of on Route eleven that's kind of going through.
I know, we had a conversation about that, we had a conversation about that last year.
You know...
It was last year or the year before.
It's tough. The buildings like that around here don't really sell that, I mean, they never have, you know, there's not a great deal of them out there. So now, you're, you're forced to say, what's, what is? And that's, that's where we're at, when the buildings don't sell, then how do you go on the market? I mean, you can, you can, want to guess that, but boy, that, that, that gets you in trouble when you start to guess.
Yeah, but that...
Look out, have nothing behind them.
But I don't, I don't think, I don't think that two hundred thousand dollars an acre is a, is a, a fair comp when you were looking at a, in my opinion, a similar neighborhood right on the other side of the interstate that's paying less than a hundred thousand dollars an acre.
Truly, and like I said, now, now that those sales now are coming about, now, now there's something that's going to have to be looked at. Beforehand, before those two sales, the only other sale that you had to go back to was that three million and four million dollar sales that they stole when they first came into bed, uh, when those leases were valid. And that's, that's the issue that we're going to have, because it's like, when does it sell, and then how do you determine bef, between when the lease is not there and when it sells? Where's, which is determining factor, and, and it's something I, I, you know, we're gonna have to look at. I don't know that I can tell you an answer, I really don't, other than we have to look at them when they come, come about.
Right, but if we, if we, I mean, it's really, really a tough spot, I mean, I, I think that, I think he absolutely has a very good argument for, for his land values. Um, I, I think that, uh, I think that there should be something done, but here we are at the, at the final day, how do we approach that? Do you have any advice? I mean, that's my opinion, what's your opinion?
I just don't think it's, there's got to be a balance somewhere, I mean, you just can't have mass at one side and, and one third of the price cross the road or something, it's ridiculous. I don't know.
And, and an argument from the assessor's office is going to be until we have sales to do that, and, and fortunately for Mr. Good, and even for the church, their, their sales will be considered for next year. And I know that's not much, that's a light excuse maybe for some, but it isn't, they can't be put into a land study and dealt with until that timeframe comes about.
Of course, church is going to be zipped.
They, they will, and, yeah, they will, after this, right, exactly, that's where I'm at. But there's gonna come a day when that other building that's sitting there, that's gonna, gonna come back.
Oh, I'm sure.
It is, that lease...
I'm sure, and it's going to be in the same spot, and then when they sell it, then they sell it, and they're gonna have to sell it under distress because they can't rent it for what?
What they need.
What they need to, to get out of it, so you're, they're, they're forced into a distressed sale, but you, now you can't use the... but you now you can't use the distressed sale, which is actually what the market bears, but it's a distressed sale because they have to do it in order to get to profitability.
Yes, and we fight that. I mean, that in there, as far as what we do with the, how we appraise, we're constrained. We're constrained with how we do it. So we have to do it within the bounds that we have. That's 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 the, that's that's, we have to be within the bounds that we have. So we have to wait until they do sell here right when they sell. What are they going to be? Probably distressed sale. They're no longer valuable because they don't have the leases. Uh, we did make adjustments on some of those buildings because they were used as data centers. And more than likely, those buildings then, fifteen, twenty years old now, if a data center was built now, it would not be like that. You know, they, technology has increased. It would be different. So we have made adjustments to the two that we had in this county that were data centers. And and took that into effect. Doesn't make enough of adjustments to the problem. But we do take it into effect and we are looking as best I can give you at this moment until we finally get the rest of these sales, put this behind us and go to where the sales are next year, see if we can do it. Well, you're right, they're not open market sales. So will I, so could you, other split, just could you stop and say, let's make the market off of those sales? But you wouldn't be smart. Being that those things are doing what they're doing, I mean, if you get enough of them doing the same thing, then it has to take something. So maybe now, as far as location's going in the neighborhoods. Whereas one time that location was a, I I don't off the top of my head know whether it was a location one or two or three, maybe that location I asked to look at. Because if if on a stretch of ground, you have a distressed sale, that's the only thing. Same thing.
Well, the way he arrived at these sixty thousand dollars was was sort of arbitrary. I mean, he, what he did was average the comps and came up with the sixty thousand or the fifty, fifty-six or eleven. And I think he said he'd he'd pay sixty. You know, I mean, the fact of the matter is he'll pay whatever, whatever we say it is.
Right.
I don't know whether it's closer to a hundred or I I don't know how to compare it. These, there's one on here that's eighty-five. That's the other. That's not improved. That's number three. It's eighty-five. Number one's forty-eight.
Number three is, uh, number three is three acres at a hundred and fifty-three thousand.
So is there, is there, is there an argument that that it is, it is obviously a a little more accessible probably than the subdivision? So the value should be a little bit more than than the, than the industrial park. It's a little more accessible to interstate than the industrial park. So how do you handle that argument when you, when you look at your neighborhoods, a neighborhood that's more accessible? I mean, obviously.
A neighborhood that's more accessible should carry a little bit more value than a neighborhood that's not, right, it should. So and that's, that's based on the sales, based on what we're seeing. You know, uh, you have a stretch of road just like T.J. Jackson, and you have a building, you know, that that one Mr. Goodville is is high up. It's it's on the northern end of T.J. Jackson. And of course, the the church is, is more towards the southern half of it. You know, somewhere in there then.
Right.
You know, which you you've got to come to a determination based on location, based on accessibility, based on visibility.
Right. So I mean, if it was, if it was twice the value, if it was twice the value of the industrial park and he came up with an average of sixty thousand, you're still only talking a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of value and because it's more access- accessible. Does that make sense?
It can. I'll put you that way. It can't, uh, it's still going to be based on how the the market is flowing and 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 all what we're seeing as far as what's happening on T.J.'s accident. I I those those prices were set because at the time, I mean, T.J. Jackson, those buildings were selling at a great deal. So you make your market. You have to be there when you say it's racing. Have to be there. Has to be. Uh, and so it it carries that value until something else changes.
So we base the the government comes in and says, build me a building and I'm going to pay you a dollar for it, the government. And that's what, that's what the sale price is then. Then government leaves and you lose that long-term lease.
What what generally happens to it is once the government has come in and has affected that lease, generally it's a twenty-year lease. Well, that lease becomes very valuable. So the owner says, let's sell this, and he will find a buyer for it, which is what happens. He puts it out there on the market, the buyer finds him, he says, yes, but this lease, I can afford to pay the top, I, because it's very valuable to have one one lease in a building as well. And so then it's owned and then now that's the same.
Yeah.
You say not one sale. We always said that not one sale.
If you, if if you consider that that's a good price, that that's what you're going to have to deal with, that high price, then would it leave when the, when the lease from the government leaves, less easily? And you don't have a valuable asset or as value. Seems to me the same thing happened. You, you need to bring it down to make it fair.
Well, and and there's, there's your issue.
With or without a sale.
Well, that's your issue. Because now you're saying you have to bring it down. And the question then becomes to where? And how did you make that determination? Because no matter what, if they don't like that value, they're going to be before you. And something's got to be proven. It's got to be proven. So do I just say, well, just because I didn't think it would be? That one don't fly very.
No, but you can look at, I mean, you can look at an office, you can look at the office rent, and if the office rent in that area is renting, if i- if the office rent is renting for twelve dollars a square foot to to rent that facility and the government's paying forty dollars a square foot.
Right.
They move out, you know, you have to adjust that in order to hit the market value. The problem was when you bid, you know, if there's a GSA lease, a lot of times those are set out for bid and you bid on that lease before you even have a building.
Right.
And then you build the building to spec for what they want. That building may be worth that to the federal government because that's exactly what they want.
But it's overbuilt for the market that we're in.
But it's, it's exactly. So everybody else, it, once they're gone and they pull out, you don't have a use for that building at all. So now you have to adjust that use to back to uh, office space or or some type of business. Um, there's got to be some, some way to use a different multiplier to come up with that, looking at what the fair market value is going to bring for a, for an office building or 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 a big warehouse space or something like that.
You, you bring up a, a great thought on that. And and it's something that we've kicked around in, but y'all just you make excuses for what you do, but when you're, when you're dealing with three thousand property prices and and to do that, sometimes it takes a while. And sometimes the time wise, it's not there to adequately do that kind of stuff when you're responsible for the sales on the whole camp. Now, is it an excuse? Well, I guess I am making an excuse. I'm only saying though, it's true. But sometimes in those situations, when you're talking about, you know, we send out mailers every year. We send out mails to every, if if an office building, which for us is a three fifty-three code, so very simply, three fifty-three thirty-seven, then we send out mailers to every code three fifty-three and ask them for their incoming expense information. Historically, if I get ten percent online, most people just, I ain't doing it. And there's nothing I can do to them, but they don't. I can only ask them for that information. So to be able to do a very, a good market analysis, I'm stuck on information. I'm not allowed to use anything public. So it's like, how do I prove it now? I understand what you're saying, but then how do I prove it? And where do I go to get that information that that it would be something that if you had a hearing, it would be acceptable and and done well? It becomes tough.
It's kind of the main, same mentality on how scale wages affected our area. You know, when you look at how scale wages were done, they were done by a group that paid those wages and they sent out the, they sent out the information. And the only ones that respond is that group because because they want their wages to continually go up. So the wages, the scale wages kept going up because they were the one feeding it to the state.
Right. Right, exactly.
So there you go.
And then when when we're not, we're not getting any kind of response that's really, we're not to really generate anything. I can't tell you what the vacancies are. I couldn't really. I mean, do I know about like some of the square foot prices that that sell that that people rent for these four? Oh, I I I've seen them. I've I've seen some studies and I've seen their stuff. But does it ever come into our office to get that? And and I could say, look, I have the numbers here. So now, you know, then you go back to your hands. How, what do you base upon what's going on? In in disrespect with T.J. Jackson, we kind of see it. And 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 now that you've made your decision, Mr. Good makes some good points. That's a slick guy, man. He's pretty slick. I've talked to him in many cases. He knows what he's doing. I ain't no doubt in my mind. It comes back down to us, how do we prove? I got to have some concrete to prove anything. We have two buildings up there that have sold. Not in a way that most open market sales.
Right.
So it does say something.
And the, and if, what, do we have a number of what the land value, when they sold, what the land value of those two buildings would have been? I mean, you just have a sale price, so we don't really have a calculation of what part of that was land and what part of that was real estate, right?
Well, in in that respect, then what we would do is we would take away the cost of the building, what we have building value, and then anything left over to go to the land. And that one, and it like Mr. Good and that house, ten thousand square foot building he had, he he owns. There's not a whole lot left over. Once you put six hundred thousand dollars on it, that that you could, you know, I mean, it's like, then it becomes nothing. Well, I I know his land is more valuable. You know it. What is it? Maybe now.
Well, the building's worth more than it it was, I mean, the building is overpriced in itself.
It's self-righteous.
And that's probably why he decided not to, not to have that argument because of the value of the building. It is what it is. It was built for a contract.
Right, right.
Web beer. Web beer, dog. Oh, no, no, I understand. I totally understand. I totally understand. But I'm saying there's a problem with the method. There's a problem.
I agree with you about what we're monitoring about.
Right. Yeah, there's a problem. I'm not, I'm not saying he didn't do his job by any means. I'm, I'm saying that there's
There's got to be a what?
There's a problem with the method and and this, this is really, in my opinion, in my opinion, we're, we're close to being twice the value of what we're charging than what it's really worth out there.
It may very well be, and we may prove that out. And something's got to give. Honestly, I don't have an answer.
That's why they
Have it on their move?
You know, for comparables to go to Frederick, Maryland and Winchester, Virginia.
Right, because those kinds of properties are not selling a great deal here, you know, and what's selling out, warehouses selling out, you know, that's, everybody wants to build warehouse. Now we got warehouses that make the buildings, make the
You know what? There's not enough warehouse space in this county. I mean, it seems like everybody is looking for warehouse space right now.
Right.
And the more, the more business you bring to the area, the more warehouse space you're going to need.
Right.
I mean, that's just how it is.
Right.
What were you going to ask?
Do you have the land value? Value of the land, so just the land value?
From Mr. Good?
Yes.
Well, let me see. Well. Yeah, I'd like to find that. I know it's here. There. Well, I don't have his say.
What was it before this?
Land value was eight seventy-seven. Eight seventy-seven, eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand for four point two two.
What was it, four point two?
Four point four two.
Yeah, a couple hundred thousand dollars an acre.
Right.
Yeah, hundred and eighty-eight.
And so maybe this year, that location, as it sits from Williamsport Pike and crosses the street or crosses the interstate into T.J. Jackson, maybe that is a more indicative, indicative of the value and not a separation between the two. That's something we're going to look at. That's something we're going to see.
But not until next year.
Unfortunately, that means these two sales, when I hit us, it's a, this problem, yes. Uh, you're right. You're right. You're right. It will not. You're right, but paying a nor, I mean, you know, I, it's, it's a hard, it's a hard, it's a hard job to manage. It it really is. Yeah, I understand what they're saying. I I understand what I can prove.
And you make your decisions based on numbers you've got.
That's just, again, it's just a simple fact. Yeah, if we get in anything else, we're getting in trouble.
The the problem is if we make it, if the council makes an adjustment.
We have to have something.
It's subjective.
Right, I get it.
I think your gut tells you that something.
Well, I I, my, my gut tells me that I should tell him to go ahead and file for an appeal.
And he, and he
Because I don't have enough, I don't have enough evidence or 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 uh, um, facts that I can adjust it.
Right.
But I do believe it should be adjusted, but I don't know how much it should be adjusted. So
I I I'm writing that same, but we see it all the time. You don't have a verifiable number that you can go to and say, this is what we believe. It's very difficult to prove this. Your gut tells you one thing, but now we got to prove, that's and who knows? And you're right, and there's there's two sales that you can probably look at and go, they're not good sales, but maybe then there's other sales of office buildings.
I understand, I understand, I understand. But that, I think the whole thing needs to be looked at. We need to look at it and come up with a better way of determining where we're at because obviously we have the opposite problem right down the road where those values are way under where they should be. So, you know. Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean.
Because if you're waiting for a sale, you never come.
Exactly, right, no.
Let's just, I guess we can't fix it. How about us just make a motion and move on? Would that work?
I'll accept the motion.
I'll accept.
That means you have to prove it or approve, uh, I mean, I guess
I agree with you.
To approve, right, uh, uh, something to, we have to
The answer's in the appeal.
Well, they're going to have to go to the appeals, so we can't, so we're going to accept what's here.
So you have to either approve Norwood's or hit one of them.
And and what you should do is make a motion to approve the recommend, the recommendation with the exception of in the second paragraph, I will change uh, comparables one and two to comparables one and three.
Right, where you have that.
I'd like to make a motion that would accept the recommendation of Graystone Spring Mills, which is um, parcel ID oh-two-fourteen dash one point one zero. And correct uh, the document to say one and three, not one and two.
Comparables, one and
Comparables, excuse me, comparables one, two, three, not one and two.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, we gotta, um...
That's it.
That's it? Okay, I will accept a, a motion for sign and die.
Uh, so, move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and items from the public? Oh, Jim?
Mr. President, per term, I move to recess.
We are recessed.
You'll have to certify values by the end of the day.